Bye. Everyone, please stand and rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is the product of the sands by nature of God in the law of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll get right into it. Let's have another one approved through the minutes from April fifteenth. Twenty-five that will get a chance to read the minutes. Make a motion to approve. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Item two, warrant.
We approve warrant number zero five one two three five in the amount of two hundred thirty thousand nine hundred twenty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, department reports. Chief Hurley?
Good evening, Mayor and Board.
Good evening.
For the activity for the department for the month of April, one hundred fifteen submissions were issued. We had four hundred fifty-six calls for service, eighty of those in Grandview, three hundred seventy-six here in Piermont. And just a reminder to everyone, Grand Ponto is taking place this Sunday. The route is on nine W. We plan to have a wood closure from about seven forty-five to eight thirty. Residents are still going to use their own way, emergency vehicles, but the door battle angle will be shut down temporarily. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. Did you tell me the five? Uh, Charlie, you have anything to report on building?
Um, just a quick note that the village judge near and I have been monitoring several sites, especially the ones up here on the peak. There was, uh, I believe fifty thousand foot nest room because of, uh, so flooding problems in the neighborhood of houses. So, on Friday I was there. Uh, they seem to solve most of the problems. We wanted to just add one small swell on the side of the property to make sure all the water is maintained on their property. And they're pretty much wrapped up. And then I filled up on nine W, um, the drainage system is working perfectly on the properties up there at seven six six and seven six eight. And the, uh, I spoke with the neighbors across the street that used to get flooded all the time. And they're no longer getting any water during the end rains, so they're very happy.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Thanks, Charlie. Okay, item four, old business. Jeff, three, you have anything on old?
No, no old business.
Anybody? Okay, new business?
Uh, the only thing I have for new business is the New York State local retirement system said they had noticed that we do have a resolution, uh, tab and then posting, um, on the website for any appointed officials that go directly for his work and the location of them. So that's what's forwarded to the board. Um, and then if that gets approved tonight, then it would be posted on the website and having to post it for thirty days and return to them within forty-five days.
Okay. So you just need a motion to approve this?
Yes.
Resolution, correct?
Yes.
So make that motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, anything else in new business?
Uh, I do not have anything else, no.
Anybody? Yeah, okay. You know, before we go to public comment, um, I'd like to jump to number seven. Uh, introduction of Alex Trednack, new director of the Dennis P. McHugh Public, Piermont Public Library. Uh, I think Alex wants to come up and say a few words. All right, Alex?
Hello. Hi, um, so yeah, thank you to the mayor, to the board for having me tonight, uh, thank you to the public. Uh, so yeah, my name is Alex Trednack. I'm the new, uh, director of the Piermont Public Library. Uh, thrilled to be here. I've been learning a great deal about the community and its history, um, over the last few weeks. Um, and I'm just very excited to be here to introduce myself to you all. Uh, if you don't have a library card, come in and get one. If you have one, uh, come in and, um, use it. And, um, it's great to meet you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, I'll just look back to this. Public comment. Uh, Nina?
Good evening, Mayor trustees. I'm here regarding the clear cutting of land at seven six six, seven sixty-eight Route nine W on Folsom Mountain. According to government records, Folsom Mountain is, uh, five hundred and thirty-two acres of wooded mountain composed primarily of hardwoods, oaks, maple, hickory, beech, dogwood, which are the same trees listed in the village code as protective trees. This land development made into two lots, forty-one thousand and forty-three thousand square feet, over acre each lot. Eight of them offer two new houses in an area defined in the village code as environmentally sensitive site and features due to the steep slope. And county recommendations were made due to this being more than a forty percent steep slope. Stormwater pollution prevention plan was not submitted. The Hudson Valley nature, I need to skip that part. Uh, village code also requires submitting a plan identifying and showing the location and setting forth measures to protect trees before, during, and after construction. There's an entire code regarding tree preservation and protection in which the applicant provides the approving agency with a tree protection preservation list of criteria that must deem not pertinent or necessary by the HCC official approving, uh, the plan. And my question is, does planning board deem this not pertinent or necessary based on what? This now sets the precedence that anyone can clear the mountain with the environment wildlife aesthetic, environment, and public safety and found neighbors in potential threat. When I requested the foil for the permits that allowed this, I was given a site lock with explanations to make up for the clearing if the owner had planted one hundred and ninety arborvitae costing sixteen thousand dollars, which appears to be a privacy hedge and not spread all through the land, not having adequate taproot systems for arborvitae for stormwater on steep slopes. I was told it was done to appease those who have safety and aesthetic concerns or complained there will be cherry trees planted. The county is happy we cleared the trees, so they won't fall on nine W. And there are in fact three trees left on the south edge of the property. It's going to have a cool off of the coverage. I don't know how that's reassuring and doesn't really apply and is in the codes for views. The removal of the trees, um, has caused gross devastation carving into not only the historic mountain, it lays bare and aesthetical in the side of the mountain seen literally a mile away where we stand at the end of the pier. Not only a nice orbit imposing environmental evisceration and wildlife life habitat threat. Whether you live in Piermont, uh, near Piermont Avenue or not, we have all experienced the devastation that's gone by the delivery of steep slope flooding from Folsom Mountain all the way to Pearland Park and into the river. Not only flooding backyards, but the force of flooding water, um, taking anything along with it. Contents of sheds, garages, solvents, pesticides, all the way to the river, inches of stagnant floodwater and load. The people, there are people in the village government roles that made a commitment to make judicious decisions about the future. Public safety, the equivalent land use for the future is in every next moment, which is now. So asking if the vote is...
Thank you. Sarah Tucker?
Hi, Sarah Tucker, forty-four Piermont Place. Um, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the village board and, um, Chief Hurley and the police department and the fire department, uh, for allowing Keep Brooklyn Beautiful to have a wonderful community cleanup on May third, um, on the pier and all around our parks and our streets. It was a really successful cleanup. We had probably over a hundred volunteers and collected many bags of, uh, garbage and recycling. And also thank you to DPW, uh, department for cleaning up after the cleanup. And, uh, just really appreciate the cooperation and the collaboration of all of our residents. So thank you for allowing us to do that.
Okay, uh, let's move on. I'm, um, just to address, uh, anybody who has concerns about that property upon nine W? Uh, I'll just reach out to Charlie. My understanding that they got all their approvals, both from the village boards as well as from Rockland County. So I would just reach out to Charlie and, uh, I'm sure that he would, uh, Charlie, anything else to add?
No, they just, uh, the reason that this hillside was cleared the way it was is there's fifteen seepage pits, septic tanks, and drainage pits for the hillside. So the property was cleared because they had to dig and put all the tanks in. And the reason that was done was because there's no sewer line on nine W. So the north side of, uh, I mean, the west side of nine W, all the houses are on septic. It just so happens that the county health department actually designed the septic system, told them what they needed. So they put it in according to county's, uh, recommendations and designs. That's about it.
All right, uh, item number nine, recommendation from the transportation committee to set number of parking spaces available for feeinglo parking filop. And if we have full cadent chair of the transportation committee here tonight.
Yes. Okay.
Thanks, Paul.
Hi, everybody. So as you recall, there was some inconsistent language in the code related to file up, which you cleaned up, uh, in the last meeting, such that the, the eligible spaces need to be off-street, both village-owned and privately-owned. The data that I believe you have has, um, reset those totals and, um, uh, subtracted from those totals, the permit parking spaces that have been granted to residents in Lot D and River Lot. And the result is the remaining inventory of off-street, village-owned, and private, those that are reasonable walk to downtown. And from that, uh, seventy-six filop spaces have been issued currently, which means that we have some headspace for additional spaces should you choose to adopt these figures and go accordingly. So is, we're simply recommending it, it's your, uh, decision to make the final, uh, numbers. And, um, we can answer any questions you may have about it.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, well, I have a comment. Uh, so I have here a copy of a, uh, village parking assessment that was done in two thousand and ten. And I'm afraid that what we're missing in this analysis is accounting for the businesses that do not require feeable parking spaces, but do utilize parking spaces. So there are a significant number of parking spaces utilized by businesses that aren't required to purchase feeable parking. And just to, I mean, to point a few of them out, you know, forty-two Piermont Avenue, we showed fifty-two parking spots in use in two thousand and ten. Uh, for sixty-eight Piermont Avenue, forty parking spots in use. For fifty-seven Piermont Avenue, forty parking spots in use. Uh, five oh six Piermont Avenue, twenty-nine parking spots in use. And that is only sampling the largest, uh, assessment of what actual usage was. It doesn't include everything. This assessment at that time came up with a total of three hundred and seventy-nine parking spaces being utilized prior to feeinglo parking. So my concern about looking at the number of off-street parking spots is that if we're not factoring in existing usage from non-feeable parking businesses, we're not getting an accurate picture of what our actual availability is. So for example, in the system we're in, we're now including twenty-eight parking spots that are across from the Gadsden Pavilion, uh, which are legitimate parking spots that don't require a permit. And so it makes sense why you would think they should be included. But also doesn't take into account the fact that on a nice Sunday in the summer, they're utilized by people walking the pier. So if we're trying to say a business has access to that parking spot, but anytime that somebody parked there so they can walk on the pier and isn't actually available, it doesn't seem realistic. And the same applies, I think, to the Rocket Candy Lot spaces by the pool house and tennis courts. There are thirty spaces there, but there are also people that go to play tennis and pickleball and...
That's, that's, I mean, so you, what are you saying? Want to give it a file up?
No, what I'm saying is that, uh, we have two numbers here on this piece of paper. One is seventy-six current spaces used, one is two hundred and twenty-two off-street parking spaces. And there's delta between those that all describe as headroom. My point is that I don't believe that headroom actually exists because of the usage of other businesses besides just a feeable parking. So for example, the turning point isn't required to provide, uh, feeable...
That's not what the, that's not what the filop code says. It's available spaces.
It's...
Off, off-street available spaces.
Off-street available spaces as designated by this board as part of the feeable of parking inventory on an annual basis. And that inventory should be informed by usage by existing businesses. To pretend that the turning point and Riley's and sidewalk don't have the need for any off-street parking is not fair to those existing...
No, they use non-street parking.
And off-street parking.
So now you want to take the entire number of on and off-street?
No, all I'm saying is that...
This is only off-street, this is the non-street.
Right, this is only off-street, but I believe that the existing businesses are using off-street parking in the River Lot and Parking Lot D.
So how do you want to do this?
I, my, my point is just that I don't believe there is any actual headroom in between the feeable parking spaces currently rented and what we actually physically have available.
If I have to just comment, if you take it to the extreme, it means that when visitors come and occupy all spaces in Piermont, there's no available spaces for filing. That's, that's what it means?
In, in, in some ways, I mean, what the, the whole point that I'm trying to drive at is that when we first looked at feeable parking, we started off from the assumption of on a Saturday night or a Sunday afternoon, how many empty spots are in the River Lot and in Parking Lot D? Not how many spots exist in Parking Lot D on a rainy Monday morning when no one's in town. And I think that that's the realistic way that we should be estimating our traffic, you, our parking usage, not just simply based on number of physical spots. I used downtown on Saturday, I walked around for a half an hour. There were cars double parked all over the town, it was not a single parking spot. It's only the beginning of the season now. And so part of this discussion has been the implication that we should increase the number of feeable parking spots that we are granting to businesses. My only concern is that I think we already gave it too high a number. Like, we've already exceeded what is really available in that number seventy-six. And any conversation about making that a larger number is just going to exacerbate the problem.
Is this your recommendation?
Uh, yes.
From the committee?
And that's based on our understanding of the definition of what originated with the filop program. It of course doesn't designate a specific spot for a filop space purchased. It's generally to help fund the maintenance and capacity of parking in Piermont in general. Uh, we do subtract the parking permits, which are official use of the capacity in a specific place. But that's as far as we've taken it. I would also say if you added another hundred spaces for the examples that you gave, and maybe even a hundred and fifty, you know, we're, we're defining headspace even at that to some degree. But I leave it to you, you guys, this is how we've understood the number should be analyzed and put together.
Let me do. Uh, I think that, um, you know, we're just trying to get a number for this year. About January, you want to give it a file up? Go ahead.
I think file up is good legislation. I think the hazard is just simply what number we select to use for inventory. Should be based on the number of empty spots on a Saturday night.
You just, you still better come up with some sort of arbitrary number that should never be, you know, quantified.
Are you taking a comment, Paulus?
Uh, no. Uh, I make a motion to accept the recommendation of the chair of the committee to establish two hundred and twenty-two eligible off-street spaces, spaces proximate to downtown for feeinglo parking. Anyone want a second? Okay. Still one number.
So what would this do, Chris, if we doubt, uh, go forward with this tonight?
I don't know. You tell me.
I don't know.
You want to come up with another number?
Maybe what would you feel is...
They feel that, they feel that the seventy-six is already too much.
That's, that's true, I do.
Yeah.
And so you're suggesting that we stop allowing additional file up spots?
Yes, I think over the last five or six years, when people come in and want to open a new business and require off-street parking in our operating, we have expanded the number of spots that we're considering as available for feeable parking based on requests from people looking to open up a new type of business. I think that those decisions should be, as it's listed in the code, looked at once a year and looked at on the basis of what is our excess parking inventory, not one parking number of spots.
This doesn't even town street parking to, uh, down to, you know, the post office and beyond, Paradise, up Piermont Avenue. Uh, you know, you go to New York City, you expect to park a block away from, from where you're going to be? So I think, if I recall, that the total number of spots that the committee's...
About four hundred and fifty.
Four hundred and fifty. So, you know, how are you going to break that down to, is it, you know, how far someone will walk? I mean, how are...
I think a lot of this is just based on simply observation. And I know that's not a total, but I, what I see is people double parking and walking off Main Street to let passengers out before they go relocate to another parking spot. People parking in the crosswalk, people parking in the bus stop, people parking on the end caps in the parking lot outside the unit building. Every parking spot, whether it's legal or not, is being utilized right now. We have parking tickets that come in from people that are parking illegally. And I think part of that is just that there's an unfairness in us telling a business there is available parking, you can pay us a fee for your customers to have access.
Do you want to give it a file up?
No, I want to keep the inventory to a reasonable number. And when we started out with like twenty-five, six, seven years ago, now we're up to seventy-six already and we're talking about two hundred and twenty-two. It just doesn't seem...
You're giving twenty-five.
It was, in the back of my head.
Maybe, uh, when you first did it all?
The first use was opening up the back patio of the sidewalk. And that was only like twelve spots, I think.
Right. Okay. So this is your answer?
So do you think there's a compromise rate?
Nate, what was your number of spots that you said would be utilized by businesses?
This comes from, this comes from your, uh, Charlie from two thousand and ten. And the total usage at that time was listed as three hundred and seventy-nine. It didn't specify whether those parking spots were being used on-street or off-street, but they clearly were more than just the on-street parking on Main Street.
Right, but that was all the businesses.
That was...
Yeah, well, businesses. That's everything.
That's from King Street down to Tate, I believe.
But that included the businesses that were, uh, on the filop list. Uh, that included the bistro, that included everybody in that number.
I'm not sure what you included in this.
Right, I do. I mean, we did the gross number, we did, if you took every single business down here and needed a parking spot, that was the number right now.
Do you think there is excess of feeable parking right now in Piermont?
I think if you're willing to walk, you can find a parking space, just like the city, you know. You know, I've come down here on the weekends when it's jam-packed and I always, if I park three minutes down the road, I park and then I walk in, into town. It, it just depends if you're willing to walk or not. I think you always have elderly people dropping somebody off. That happens all the time in front of a restaurant. So I don't think that's a fair analysis of what's going on with the parking. You always have somebody dropping somebody off because they can't walk, they have a disability, whatever it is. But I think if you're willing to walk, most times you can find parking space. If you're asking the truth from me, I'm an outsider. You guys should do what you think is right for the village. I'm giving you from a perspective from I come into town, as an outsider, I've never had a problem getting a parking spot.
Okay.
If that I'm willing to walk. I'm not, I'm not saying it's down here. And I know some residents in the past have said to me, it's unfair of us, we can't park in front of the restaurants. And I understand that, some people want to park right in front. It's like when you see the car drive, walks, waiting for the first and second spot, he drives around for half an hour to park.
Well, you could have been out of the store, right? If you parked in the back of the lot. And, and that's one of my concerns as well. It's another thing that I observed is that people psychologically would like to park very close to the place that they're going to.
I agree.
You know, there is not available parking. They will have the tendency, just like at the mall, to go drive around and be parking spot short. And now you're increasing the impact on traffic, it's just because you have people making illegal U-turns, both ends of the block, people driving out, coming back in, it's law. If people are expecting to find parking near the location they're going to and they can't, it creates problems. And in my mind, it creates a situation where we're not being forthright with businesses who are charging money for these spots. I've had so many business owners that pay for feeable parking, they've said, can you tell me where my parking spot is? And I can't. And it's a legitimate concern if customers are coming into their restaurants and saying, I'm not coming back here next week because I had to park all the way down on the pier, walk ten minutes, and my, you know, grandmother can't do it, whatever it is. We should take that into account when we look at what number we're arbitrarily establishing as the amount of unused spots in there. And so I, I mean, I don't question if this, uh, inventory is count the number of physical spots that exist. My concern is just that I think they're all already used. And when you go and look at it, if you come down here on Sunday, we've got the farmer's market going on, you've got people walking up here, there's none of the spot anywhere in town. And we're sampling these businesses, these feeable parking spots with a certain, you know, promise that they are off-parking spots available to their customers, they're paying.
But what do you sell them, why would you sell them a hundred? I mean, how do you justify whatever number you want to come up with, uh, just an arbitrary number?
Well, I think what was done when the legislation was originally established that we could do again is we physically go and look at during a time, not a Monday night when everything is closed. But let's look at tonight. I mean, Village Hall is one of those usage on this twenty-ten inventory that we might have a meeting here on a Tuesday night or a different type of a meeting on Wednesday or Thursday. And there might be thirty-four cars. So should we not consider that those thirty or forty cars that are trying to come to Village Hall also need to be able to park somewhere in town? And when we just look at the seventy-six, what we're not counting is those businesses that have seating that's grandfathered in and don't require feeable parking. And those businesses that don't require parking off-street as a result of the size, like the retail shops, like the travel agents, uh, like, you know, there's a... There are other businesses also, and there are residents that live on top of the buildings in the commercial district that would like to be able to come from the grocery store and park on the street near their building, unload their groceries before they move the lot to the River Lot. If they're unable to do that, and it's because we have decided we have more available parking than actually is...
Again, just keep in mind that filop, my understanding is created as a, as a way to get raised revenue.
That's one of my...
What do you, uh, not as a way to restrict seating in restaurants?
No, it's only, it restricts seating in restaurants. It's only said you can't have seating unless you have off-street parking.
So, but you're trying to use it as a way to control restaurants, is what you're trying to do?
I'm trying to use it as a way to control the amount of parking demand that we're creating in a village with limited parking capacity.
Right, so if you think that by restricting filop to twenty spots, it's going to be any less traffic, you know, than we can...
I didn't. And we will be...
Because you're restricting, if you're not selling fifty spots or sixty spots?
Yes, because you're not giving businesses the, uh, impression that they have the capacity in terms of seating, uh, because it's not matched by parking. So if you give the businesses, I want to add thirty seats here, and we say that means you need ten more parking spots, no problem, you got ten more parking spots. Why couldn't they recently turn to us and say, but you didn't make any new parking, where'd you get the ten from? I want to know which ones are mine that I'm paying for. And so I don't think it's a perfect system. I do think it allows us to have some influence on what amount of seating can be added in the village of Piermont. But I think, you know, I think our first responsibility has to be to the existing businesses to not compromise their ability to get their seats filled by allowing additional seats elsewhere. They're going to compete for the same actual parking spaces.
Okay, so why don't they... They're...
I, I mean, I, I think seventy-six is too high right now. I, for the last couple of times, people come in asking for feeable parking, on record saying I think we've already used more than we can... on record saying, "I think we've already used more than we have yet." I, I don't want to just arbitrarily pick a number out of the air right now and say this isn't worth the choice.
Probably the only way to do this is take something, however fairly out of the air, and revisit it one or six months later and see how it's working.
Well, so we've committed to taking money from people, three, seven, six spots. I don't think we can change that in a reductive way right now because we took their money, we committed to them that these are available. I think we should stay where we are and revisit this in, in the year, like we're supposed to every year, and determine what number is appropriate. There's a process in the code whereby if anyone has taken out more than the number of five right feeable parking spots, if we change inventory number, they can lose spots. And that is something that we're protected by the way the code is written. We can make that change if we revisit this in January, but I don't think we can arbitrarily make a change without people saying we have eight of these spots.
But if you took spots away from certain businesses, they would close, you realize that, right?
I, I mean, that's a possibility, but...
It's an absolute, absolute for certain businesses.
I don't think the number is just arbitrary, it's based on what was a parking before he has provided to you. Did it count? That's what the task we're doing in the statute, I think it should be a credentialed reason for the numbers that they've provided to you.
If the recognition is that we have two hundred and twenty-two spots that should be available for sale as feeable parking, I can't take anything for that. Seventy-six spots is how we've allocated right now, two hundred and twenty-two is a large difference. You're both...
I, I just want to make sure that the use of the data does not require you to approve every application that comes before you. You could approve this number and choose to not approve anymore until, you know, some further analysis is done, but it doesn't require you to go to two hundred and twenty spaces by, by end means. Um, and, and the, the reality is, of course, that the restaurants don't have assigned spaces, they don't have rights to a specific space. Giving three more, "It's on the agenda tonight", doesn't change anything other than gets more revenue for Piermont. I think it's part of a broader discussion of what is the capacity of Piermont to support restaurants, and what is the opportunities to expand the parking capacity in Piermont, um, all of which are bigger discussions than now.
Well, and why I'm saying was just that, Bruce, you had the motion that we adopt two-two-two.
Well, is this something of a fact in the vision of the, of the transportation committee chair?
Which seems to be a little bit less light and white with this comment, that it's, we should look at this rather than we should adopt two hundred and twenty-two as the number of available feeable parking spots.
Okay.
So, if that was the motion that you made, and that's, that is a reason why I would not support that. I think that's excessive.
Right.
So, what is excessive?
So, do we need to do another assessment of all the businesses to see what, what, what the number actually is now? Right, that list is what, you said, two thousand years old? Yeah, so, so maybe we need to do another list and assess all the businesses, again, to see where we're at with the market since I made this case.
I think we should do that, I think we should do two things, actually, but I think the appropriate time to do that is at the end of the year in preparation for us revisiting what our feeable inventory is going to be in the beginning of next year, which is what the code says we should do. I think also, in addition to inventory of how many parking spots are currently being used by key trip addresses on this list from two thousand and ten, we should also consider how many businesses are going beyond the number of seats allocated by their feeable parking or their grandfather, because it's my impression that we have restaurants that have a certain number of feeable parking spots that have multiple seating, saying, "He is called for by those number of parking spots", and I'm curious also to see what that inventory would look like.
You mean their, their personal parking? I mean, like, the places that have their own parking lot onsite that park. Like, let's say, for instance, Otter's, what he parks onsite compared to, you know, what he parks offsite?
What he parks onsite and offsite as compared to the number of seats that he has, that have that device, but not just Otter's, like every business.
Well, he's one of the few places that actually has a parking lot down here, that's why, that's the only reason I brought up his name. None of the other restaurants here have any parking, except the new place that's gonna go next door. I know the landlord is now gonna have his tenants' purchase spots and parking lots, and he's picking the back lot here that he, that he fixed for the new, the new place. So, he picked up, you know, Peter Nine, he picked up down here to put his house. So, I mean, that's, that's the stuff we gotta go through then, you have to go through each place and say, "How many people do you have?", and like you said, the grandfather ones and the ones that do feeable parking. You have to do a total number of all the parking again. And then, are you counting street parking, or are you not counting street parking when you do that?
Well, these are two different, uh, these are two...
I mean, for the inventory...
One's the supply side, the other one's the demand side.
I know, but I mean, for inventory, you including the street parking and how far out you're going on the street parking, because I know they always put a cap on the street parking, how far out they went to include in the feeable parking.
The, the inventory that I think we're talking about is the demand inventory, has nothing to do with street or off-street, we're just trying to get a good number of available parking spots, our need for all of our businesses to be operating.
Right, but I'm talking about the other side of that, the side where we're selling spots. How far are you gonna go with, with, with the stocks, the spots?
Feeble parking explicitly is all-street parking, so we're not getting all work on-street with it because it's explicitly all-street park. That's why this inventory number was updated to reflect only all-street.
So, then your number doesn't reflect that, that you have, let's say, two hundred parking spots on Piermont Avenue, followed, let's say, down by Cornet is through town and up to the post office, there's like two, two hundred spots. Your number doesn't reflect that, that, if you're doing that?
Uh, no.
To offset your number, but you're saying you need this, but you're not including any of the street parking.
I, I actually am including all the street parking when it comes to total parking utilization, okay? But, but you provided in two thousand and ten was an inventory of demand, it had no...
Right, I have, I have the list too of all the parking spaces, and I include, see, up with four hundred and fifty spots.
Yep.
And then people said, "No, we want it, we want to squish the area that we took it from", and those are just parking spaces in the street.
Right, I understand, and that's absolutely not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is the usage, which I thought you got there for a minute, you talked about...
I know, I, I understood what you said, but I'm playing the other side now. If you're gonna play your side, then it's all about, uh, what, you know, the numbers that you're calculating, you also have to calculate in the parking that's available on the street, I think, because people use that for restaurants, and those are the spots that people use to go up to their apartments, like you said, to bring their food. So, if you're gonna, you're gonna, if you use it that way, you have to use it both ways. You can't, you can't eliminate the parking on the street, because feeable parking on...
I'm not suggesting we eliminate the parking on the street. What I'm suggesting is that we should update this fifteen-year-old inventory to reflect the fact that we have more parking demand than we had in two thousand and ten, based on new usage going into spaces that didn't exist when this was done. So, this number will likely come up if it's redone, in terms of the...
But the number doesn't take into consideration, like I'm saying once again, it doesn't take into consideration the on-street parking, and so I need to offset that number with that.
Yeah, but you, if you...
That's all I'm saying, I'm...
Whereas what your availability is, you have to include on-street parking, of course.
Yeah, but this is a totally separate inventory from feeable parking. I'm not averse to that, that is in fact the whole point, but a portion of the total available parking inventory is not available for feeable parking. Only the off-street is available for feeable parking.
Right, so that's why I'm saying, so if you're applying on-street parking to some of those numbers, it changes the load dramatically, you know, for everything. That, that's all I'm saying, you, you gotta do all the math for that. Because if you have two or three hundred spots on-street, and you're not using those to calculate the number of off-street parking spaces or file up, you need to offset some of the numbers that he's giving with that. That's, you know...
How are you...
I'm listening. And what, here's what I hear, guys. Everybody's trying to solve perhaps a complicated issue, but if you ever built anything, you need proper tools. And this file up that was adopted when they...
Fifteen years ago.
When nobody was in Piermont. This is an inadequate tool to accomplish money raising from restaurants, which I understand to be one of the issues, and parking in the village, which is a separate issue. And I respectfully request all the people who have authority, power, or influence to come up with something that is more practical, more understandable. This doesn't address resident parking to run up and down in their apartments. It doesn't address library. It doesn't address that at the coffee shop, it's bicycles more than cars, even though they have seats. I can go on and on about how inadequate the tool is, but I think you know that. So, knowing that the tool is inadequate, I'm asking you to come up with the tool that works. If you want to raise money from restaurants, and I'm not against that, right? Tax them in a sensible way. If you want to provide for parking, absolutely figure out the inventory and move from there. And because I'm a fan of the transportation committee, I just want to add one more thing, and I'm gonna be quiet first. I know they work really hard coming up with a proposal for signage and improvements that in and of itself is gonna help, because people will know, drivers, when I say people, I mean drivers, are now going to know where to go to park. So, all those people who prefer to park right in front of the restaurant, including all of us, but it's impractical, but there's gonna be appropriate signage. In some cases, it enhances the village because of the aesthetic look of it, and all in all, life will be easier. But, you know, if you need a drill, buy a drill, if you need a saw, buy a saw, and you guys don't have an adequate tool to do what you want.
If I just could...
Yes.
I would just sum up what I've heard Anna say in that, um, if you figure something else out, like calling it a restaurant tax, you don't have to justify to Sidewalk Cafe where their spots are, knowing they aren't a spot.
It's not fee for a parking space.
Exactly, but they all seem to think the restaurateurs, "Where's my spot?"
That's their perception, that's their perception.
Yeah, that's why I agree that...
Because again, it, it was not meant, it was meant to be a, a, a fee for the village of, you know, revenue for the village when it was first proposed. It was not meant to be of a, a tool to restrict how many restaurants could, could order.
No, quite the contrary.
But that's what it's now become.
Allow restaurants to... So, our zoning code prevented it from being commercial spaces in Piermont ever from being viable restaurant application because of the fact that they had no off-street parking. So, feeable parking was created as a way of allowing, not a way of restricting.
Right.
Thank you for letting us...
Right. So...
Can we approve what the transportation committee...
Well, obviously, we can't, the transportation committee is, I already made that motion. How about... And again, we're talking between now and December thirty-first, because from January first, you guys can put in a whole new system. And, uh, so, for the, between now and January and December thirty-first, can we do a hundred file of spots? Is that acceptable? And then you relook at it again at the end of the year? You know, and do that to the side, I mean, I agree. If this is, if, if, I'm not saying, you know, that it's, it's not a problem on Fridays and Saturdays and Sundays in the sun. I mean, I don't think it's a big problem on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays in January, but the point is, we'll take, they, uh, again, uh, a hundred for the, for the rest of this year, and then you can either come up with a new number on January first or a new system.
I mean, I don't see any reason why we should change the number at all and increase. I mean, there's no point in doing an increase unless the expectation is there to anticipation of people who are going to buy those parking spots. And now we've created a situation where, come around to two thousand and twenty-six and look at the inventory, and a business may have made long-term decisions on the basis of the availability of these spots that they could be financially damaging to them to pull, pull them out.
The only business I know of that's looking right now is the one I had, with the night, three spots.
And I don't think that I can tell what's gonna happen between now and December, but saying that there's no possibility.
Just for a reference, the, the business that was there was taking nine spots, they reduced it down to six. So, it's actually three spots less than what we were selling last year, which is why it says seventy-six on the inventory instead of seventy-nine. Right, that's why I'm telling you, it, it went down by three from, from the previous year, from the previous restaurant that was in that location.
Is this an increase in inventory number, or was the number last...
Seventy-nine was last year.
It was supposed to set, that's how it gave us all, that's not the inventory, right?
The inventory increased with each new set. Rather than having an inventory and using it as a cap, we took our inventory and expanded it when someone else came in and need feeable parking after. So, that's how we ended up with seventy-six. And I, I mean, I understand how we got here, I just feel like we've now gone too far. And so, any increase to me is just version of conditions, and it's not a matter of a compromise or finding something in the middle, this is just being grounded in reality. When you walk around on Friday night, Saturday night, or Sunday afternoon, we don't have enough parking, you're looking at, I understand, selling any more parking than we don't have enough of is just making the situation worse.
Well, we had seventy-nine.
Last year, yeah.
We take seventy-nine?
I, again, I don't think we should do any increase, any feeable parking, not any...
Mayor, a question for you, Mayor.
Yeah.
I don't know exactly how the code reads, but I think you're required to set a number, and if you don't, I'm not sure you can charge file up at all.
Yeah, we're supposed to in January, and Charlie is supposed to then tell people if there are still existing spots based on that inventory established every year in January when somebody comes in for an application. And it's not supposed to be a question of every time somebody comes in for an application, Charlie, he brings it to the village board and asks the number to be increased to accommodate that. If we set the number in seventy-six, and we've sold seventy-six, and somebody comes in to talk to Charlie, his answer is, "We have already used up all of the available inventory, it can't be expanded until next January when it's revisited."
I'm just saying, without that number, the program comes to a halt.
Pretty much.
Isn't probably how the...
In January, you couldn't come to a consensus, hey?
I'm saying again, like, what I tried to say before. You set a number, two hundred, I don't think that requires you to approve every application that comes to before the board. You can say, "I want to stop now", like you've set a number.
Actually, the three by right, it does automatically allow for it. So, if our inventory is seventy-six right now, like, let's say if our inventory was seventy-nine right now, and the business came to Charlie and said, "By right, I can take three feeable parking spaces, and I would like to", there's no oversight by this board. It's just suddenly a by-right use, and they can take care of that. So, that's where it does matter, if we change the number tonight from what we have existing to something else, whether it's three higher, or twenty-four higher, or whatever the number is, anybody can then come to Charlie and say, "I want my three by right", because there is still overhead room in the inventory that's been established.
Yeah, but most restaurants are gonna need more than three. If that would be, you know...
And that'd be a lot more than a special purpose. And they would have to come to the board.
Yeah, and they would have to, the board, then the board can deny it based on the traffic and, and the problems you're facing, you know? So, that's where reinforcement comes in. I just think you need to set a number like Paul said, that's, that covers what we're doing so that, you know, the bills go out in another couple of weeks for all the feeable parking. So, we need to come up with something, or I need to tell some people, um, you know, "Put your pocket on the front because we don't have enough parking for you anymore", because if you lower it to twenty-four, there are restaurants that are gone.
I'm not suggesting we lower it to twenty-four, what I'm saying is we should keep it exactly where it is until we can figure out what our needs are.
You said twenty-four, twenty, you kept saying twenty-five, you feel that's why we're... Getting nervous.
That was the difference between seventy-six and one hundred, which was a number that was just proposed at the moment here. That's where that twenty-four came from. But no, what I, what I'm suggesting is that the code has a process for us, that we revisit this on an annual basis, and revisit a whole until we revisit... If we revisit this on an annual basis, we leave this alone until we revisit it on an annual basis in January.
So then, if we don't come up with a number, Charlie can?
No, I'm saying the number is 76. Let's legal it. So all this talk about if there's no number is not actually what's being discussed. We have a number. We've been operating on the basis of 76 as our inventory for all of 2025 so far. I see no reason to change that now. I see there's only creating problems to change it now.
We have a request for tonight for three more.
That would be the 76. That would be the 76.
Oh, that would be the 76?
Yes.
I, I think actually that would be 79 because the last time we had this number with previous businesses, it was 79.
Right, and she had nine spots. She had, she had, she had nine spaces. The new restaurant is looking only for six spaces. So it drops it from 79 to 76. Same location.
The number we're looking at right now is 76. So adding those three spaces does not drop it to 76?
Yeah, because you had, there was nine on there for Cafe V. If you look at the list.
So you're saying we only actually have 73 views right now and the inventory from the part of the traffic committee is inaccurate?
No, it included these three.
It included the three that were.
It included the whole list from last year.
It included the three for Jarrow.
Yeah.
Well, so that means if we keep it at 76, then we still have the option of approving.
Yeah, that's exactly what it means.
Okay.
Yep.
Correct.
All right.
You want to make a motion?
To what?
76?
I was attempting to say 73.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion to 76?
I don't.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. Item number 10. Actually, we jumped to 12, so we didn't have to stay by the way. Item 12, request for a special permit from Jarrow downtown at 456 Piermont Avenue to three additional file out spaces. That will make it 76 if I have to say, correct. Somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to accept.
All in favor?
41 on that one also.
All right. Item number 10, establish restricted fund account for capital expenses and review and resolutions for fund balance policy. This was at the, as I mentioned at the last meeting. There is a state auditor who's been here for a few weeks now. And he's been making recommendations along the way. One of the recommendations that he's made is that we do a resolution in the event that the un, the un-specified fund balance is over a certain percentage. We discussed it at the last meeting, it's currently that if it's 25%, it would be a good amount. And that anything above 25% over the other side, fund balance would be put into a restricted fund account for capital. Which means that it could, if, it doesn't go away, it just, it has to only be used for capital items or repairs, improvements. So let me read this resolution, Village of Piermont Board of Trustees, State of New York, County of Rockland, Village of Piermont. In the matter of a fund balance policy and establishment of a restricted fund account for capital. Whereas the village board of the Village of Piermont has authority to manage and direct village fund balances that may or may not be present in a yearly audit. And whereas on the recommendation of the auditor from the state, New York State Comptroller's Office, after examination of the finances of the Village of Piermont, New York, establish a fund balance policy. Therefore, be it resolved that the village board of trustees adopts a fund balance policy whereby, after the yearly audit is complete, and in the case that the audit shows that the unassigned fund balance of the village exceeds 25% of the yearly budget, the board shall vote to transfer the excess funds to a restricted fund account for capital. And be it further resolved that the village board of trustees will establish and designate a specific financial account solely for the purpose of maintaining the funds that have been transferred to the restricted fund account for capital. And be it further resolved, the village report trustees can authorize the use of the funds into restricted fund account for capital at any time to be used solely for capital projects or emergency repairs. Adopted at the regular meeting of the Piermont Village Board held on May 13, 2025. And I believe Jennifer says that there is an account that isn't being used that we can designate for that specifically for restricted fund account for capital, correct?
In New York class, we have our general account, and then we have a restricted fund account that's at zero limit right now. So any money that was designated would be moved into that restricted fund balance account in New York class.
Right. Okay. I make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
All in favor? And obviously at this point, being so late in the budget here, probably should wait for the end of this year report and then wait for the audit and then we can look at our finances at that point. See if anything needs to be moved. Thank you. I know the, the, the auditor will be very happy. Okay, item 11, resolution to approve the Memorial Day watch fire Thursday, May 29th. Right, it was midnight on the 30th. Thursday, May 29, 2025 on the Piermont pier. I make a motion for the resolution to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 13, request from Peace in Piermont to install a bench in front of 458 Piermont Avenue. Are there members here, representatives of Peace in Piermont? Come on up to this one, please. I have to state your name and.
The, I'm here in the city, so I'm.
Okay.
He, we have submitted a permit for a bench in front of Peace in Piermont. Reason has not been granted is because Bunbury uses our space in front of the business for the bicycle rack. And they do not have a permit for that. So we want to know why it's taking so long or why we haven't been granted a permit for the bench as a vehicle.
Okay.
Bunbury's got it granted years and years ago.
We have asked for that, accommodate that permit. We have not received a copy.
That, what? The original granting was before me.
We have asked for it, we have not seen.
I believe that my daughter was told that there was no permit, that it just kind of happened and it just escaped.
No, I believe that there was a, definitely before my time, but, but there was a special permit issued that allowed Bunbury's to set up a bike rack in that spot.
Right.
And then to take it off the street at night. So that car, so that car can, can use the spot. And so for years, she's been taking it off and.
Well, originally it was in the driveway. I'll just tell you the quick. And this is even before me. It was put in the driveway on the house there. And then somebody new bought the house, didn't want the driveway, or they realized it was their driveway. Then it got moved, and this is all before me. I just listened to the stories. It got moved down around where the law offices were there. And they used to store it where the law offices were for years. And then something happened with that. Then she started leaving it out, then we started telling her, you're not allowed to leave it out according to your agreement. You were supposed to pull it off the street at night. And then it got moved to in front of the building, which she presently leases state office.
I just want to make one point also. The bike rack used to be across the street where the developments. She used to have a table there, and there was a bike rack there. So.
I think she also had a bike.
She had a bike back in front of the store, so that was a different bike rack. Joey's had one in the parking space.
Yeah.
And that was the one that was always the problem because a lot of times she wouldn't pick it up and put it away. And then it would create problems. The business would come to me and say, hey, Charlie, you know, last night town was busy and she left the bike rack out. So I would have to go down and ask her, make sure you pull the bike rack in at night.
That's part of the problem now. Placing the bike rack on the sidewalk in front of Peace in Piermont blocks the egress of walking. So if you're in a wheelchair or if you're pushing a stroller, you have to sometimes go into the street because you can't make it past if there's bikes and a bike rack. Number one.
No, there's not supposed to be any bikes and bike rack at night when it's parked.
No, this is when the business is operating.
Put a sign on there now that says, bike racks only to use during the day.
This is when the business is operating for people with egress and egress.
But when the business is operating, you don't have the racks on the street?
You know, there's, there's, there's bikes that are all around and people can't get by.
On the sidewalk?
Yeah. You should take a walk sometimes.
I do. Put those on the, the racks in the street.
But I, what I, what I think.
Yeah, I don't understand that.
What I'm understanding is when the bike rack gets placed at night, it's, it's in a different property. The bike rack doesn't belong to where Peace and Piermont's business is. It belongs to.
Which is why they ask, which is why they ask you to get together with Katie and with the landlord and work that out.
But it's not abbreviated. They're fine. They're on the same page. The problem is there's a bike rack there that belongs to the neighbor business. Like it's not, it's nothing against the, the business. They, they get along beautifully. But the bike rack doesn't.
So that's why you want the bench to prevent the bike racks from.
No, she would like, she would like a bench in front of her business so that her, her patrons can sit. They can come in and out and sit. Anybody can sit and it looks nice. And she can put some flower pots like, like many businesses along these streets have. This bench doesn't belong, this bike rack doesn't belong in front of this business. It's not part of this business. So I, we would love to see the permit that was granted. We would love to get history of how it was granted. Because we're just getting told no, and I'm not quite sure why.
Well, there is, there was no permit that says that she can issued by this village to say that she can specifically park it in front of Peace in Piermont. Understand that.
But there's no understanding that's allowing her to do that. It's just, it was not listed, it just happened.
We all understand that.
We were just told that it just happened. It was here, and then it was there, then it came here, and then it just ended up where it is. That, that there's kind of like an arbitrary history of this thing.
So there was, it was an agreement made years ago that she could put a bike rack on the street during the day in that spot and as long as she picks it up and.
Week in the day.
Up onto the sidewalk at night. It was never specified where on the sidewalk. It was just specified. It's the landlord's building. It's not our building. So the landlord literally determined, you know, where they were going to put it. It was first in the driveway, like I said, then it got moved down in front of the law offices. And I think you're right, and you don't even remember that. It was down by the offices for a while. And then it got moved back in front. And I don't know if the law offices told them they didn't want it on their sidewalk area because that's their space or I, I don't know how it got moved around. I just don't.
I mean, the sidewalk's building for it.
It's what?
The sidewalk itself. It's not a part of the building. It's part of the street.
Yes, and it's the village's sidewalk.
So why should you go up to the landlord where you're on the sidewalk somewhere and place?
Well, it's his building. It's not, it's not up to me. To me, it was kind of like a first come, first served. She started putting it there. It was wide enough. She was told she couldn't put it in front of the other person. They asked not to put it in front of their building. I think that's what happened with the law offices. I don't know what it said. Originally, it was in the driveway. This is before I was even here. It was in the driveway. When I first got down here, it used to be in five of offices at night. They used to put it up on that side. And then I don't know why it got moved to in front of her building.
But these folks are here asking about a bench in front of their establishment. It seems like they could talk to you about it already. Do you have concerns about that bench?
No, I said as long as it meets the code for wheelchair or something to get by. And that was the same thing I told the coffee shop where they wanted to put the bike racks there. I said, as long as you meet state code for wheelchair, handicap people to get by the bike racks when you're storming at night, you can put it there.
So why are you're being told by Charlie that no, you can't put the bench? I'm confused. I get a different story.
We don't have a.
That they're here tonight.
Well, wait, while my daughter put a permit in and paid the fee to have the correct paperwork done to get approvals.
Right.
Yeah. Who's been getting around? Talk to this one, talk to that one, talk to here, talk to landlord.
Listen.
Your landlord is fine with the bench.
Watch, we wanted the argument to be worked out between the landlord, the two tenants along the front of the building. The village took their stance that we don't want to get in the fight between the two tenants and the landlord. It's the landlord's building, you know, let, let him get involved with, with the bench or the racks.
I think, but I think what I was told with problem, you know, is that my daughter was told that the person that has the bike rack had to apply for a permit to put it where it is.
No.
And I'm just letting you know what she was told and then.
No, that's not true.
That's what we were told, eventually, that there is no permit.
So, no, this, this is 15, 16 years ago. They were granted a special permit to put the bike rack in that parking spot during the day.
During the day?
And the only stipulation that I recall after that was during the evening, it had to come off the street.
And then it went to several places. And then it went to several places and people went on and just kept getting passed. And now it's sitting in front of the business and it's making, it is a hard thing to get. I'm surprised that the village didn't just see it on their own because it blocks, you know, it's pretty, you know, busy section of your village.
We have a restaurant across, a restaurant across the street. I don't think that the sidewalk is any wider where he puts his tables outside than the rack to the permit.
But this, this is not about a bicycle rack. It's about a permit for a bench in front of our property. That's all it is. I don't care about the bicycle rack. I don't care where it is. I just want a permit for the bench. Because every other, every other business has a permit. Every other business has a bench in front of their. And why can't we be granted that? I don't care about your bike rack. What do you think?
Well, listen, I, I agree with you, and that's why we wanted you and the landlord to work out where.
Landlord is funding it to you guys.
What?
Landlord is funding it to you. So why can't, okay, why do I have to work out with landlord and a permit from you?
Because if he goes along with it.
Put a bench, put a bench in front of my business.
It's not the village's.
So why aren't you granting the permit to put a bench on the business?
I don't grant permits.
Or whatever the answer is.
I'm just saying, we didn't want to get in the fight, and I explained that to the landlord, that I would like you to work it out where you want the stuff to be in front of your building. The village doesn't want to, you know, be in the mix where things should go. You guys worked out amongst yourselves and will grant the permits. And that's exactly what I told the landlord.
Well, I think that I.
And I told the landlord several times about this and asked.
I think my daughter was waiting for the permit to be approved.
Okay. But if we were to grant the permit to put a bench there, you wouldn't have any safety concerns about that?
No, she did a drawing for me. It showed that they would have ample space for wheelchairs that we could buy. But like I said, now it throws the bike rack back into the mix where it's going again. And that's why you have the landlord to figure it out.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not this board's problem. And maybe they need to file for a permit for exactly where their bike rack is going to be during the day and where it will be at night.
Well, they already have permission to put it.
On the sidewalk. It just said on the sidewalk. It didn't say the exact spot. It was the village owns the sidewalk. There lies the problem. So we tried to ask the landlord to come up with a solution.
I'm saying in terms of consistency, Dave.
So we're just. It used to be for a bench permit.
Yeah, that's all it is.
That's all right.
Okay. Any other questions? Somebody want to make a motion to approve the bench in front of Peace in Piermont?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Item fourteen, resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-five tax order. Jennifer, you said?
Yes.
Resolution?
Okay, uh, here, we can move the board down here. Please, before we can be able to start collecting taxes on the first. This year's total amount of the tax warrant is five million, five hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars. Please start collecting on the first. And then we can collect through October thirty-first. Any other property that we can handle before we do that. Currently, uh, we're working on the new tax system. Um, we will be going live online this year for residents to see their property taxes online. We won't have the capacity for the headache online this year, that will happen next year. Um, but last year's bill will face the new system and this year's bill will be uploaded into the new system. So they will be able to access public, we'll put on the website, Facebook, Google Docs, um, and wherever else we can put it for people to look at their tax bills, they can print them. Um, but they will be able to pay them online from next year. And the bills are already approved and I'm waiting for them to be shipped where we should be having the actual box by hand of all the bills. And I currently have had the residents already come in for their bill because they're going out of town, so we've already been able to provide them the bill and now I have the first one sitting in the drawer.
If I make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-five tax order?
Second.
All in favor? Item fifteen, review and approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six capital budget. Uh, everybody has the capital budget in front of them? Have these numbers on the front page, correct?
Well, technically not, we should, but Tommy is still waiting for a plan to get a price to date the ticks for the one meter, which will be used to order the plans that have been drawn. I asked him what he thought it could be.
Yeah.
And he thought maybe four to five thousand dollars, but we don't have an actual price, so I don't know if you want to add five or six thousand dollars.
Why not, right? It's likely to change, why don't we add six thousand? To the if we bring it to five eighty-seven, two ninety-three, that's two ninety-four, oh wait, is that right?
Yeah.
Two ninety.
Five eighty-seven, two ninety-three, about fifty-one.
Right, that's right. Five eighty-seven, two ninety-three, fifty-one.
And there's not a chance it could exceed? I mean, what if it exceeds then? What happens, I'm just curious.
So, I.
Can it go higher and then it's not as much?
So, that is not something that's going to, can, uh, require a commissive referendum. So it could be updated if it had to be.
Right.
Or could readdress it. We don't find it till December.
Right.
And the only things that will be part of a commissive referendum for resolutions are the big items. Um, like any trucks that are being brought up, any cars that are being brought, um, and, and things that have a life expectancy of about fifteen years.
Right.
So if you throw the bomb, those are the ones. I don't think that in, uh, you know, four to six thousand dollars, we can, we can't.
So let's figure, let's figure in the six thousand. So I make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six capital budget of five hundred eighty-seven thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty-one cents.
Second.
All in favor? Alright.
I just, we have to work out. Maybe your old business, Barbara Muto has submitted a letter to the clerk's office regarding the comp plan. Um, yeah, that she didn't want the comp plan.
Just put it into the record.
And so I'm going to put this into the, the record board.
For the comp.
Yes, so it's not to make you know that that letter was used from her.
Okay, can we get a motion to adjourn, so moved?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.